Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Resolution 25-0029.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund, number 381128-381641, inclusive, totaling $4,422,628.62. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $4,805,107.83. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0015.
So authorizing the execution and delivery of the county agreement by and among the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, the multi-purpose stadium authority of Lackawanna County, and PNC Bank, National Association. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna enacted ordinance number 221 on August 27th, 2012, which imposed a hotel room rental tax within the county; and whereas, the multi-purpose stadium authority of Lackawanna County has determined to issue its hotel room rental tax revenue note to fund the costs of repairs, renovations, and other improvements to the Lackawanna County Stadium, PNC Field, located at 235 Montage Mountain Road, Music, Pennsylvania, 18507, to fund a debt service reserve fund for the note and the authority's outstanding hotel room rental tax revenue note series of 2019 and hotel room rental tax revenue note series of 2024, and pay the costs and expenses of issuing the note. Whereas, the county, the authority, and PNC Bank, National Association, as lender and purchaser of the note, desire to enter into a county agreement to provide for the procedures relating to the collection, deposit, and dispersment of revenues generated from the tax pursuant to the ordinance in support of the note of the authority. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve as follows: Section 1, the county agreement is hereby approved. The chairman of the County Board of Commissioners or any other commissioner of the county is hereby authorized and directed to sign the county agreement, and the chief of staff of the county is hereby authorized to affix the seal of the county there, too. Section 2, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, any other commissioner of the county, chief of staff, the county treasurer, and any other proper officer of the county are authorized and directed to execute and deliver such additional documents to effect the issuance of the note and the transactions contemplated by this resolution and the county agreement. Section 3, nothing in this resolution or in the county agreement shall constitute or create liability of the county with respect to the note. Section 4, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is Attorney Brian Kuzlinski.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is an update to the county agreement that we put in place last year for the financing when we started the renovations at the stadium. The authority had hoped to get $3 to $4 million in state grant proceeds to put towards the project. They only got $500,000 from the state. So PNC is stepping up to do the completion financing for this. This county agreement is exactly what we have in place. It just references the new debt. No additional obligations on the county. As I mentioned in the resolution, the county's not obligated on the note. It's payable solely from the authority's share of the hotel taxes. Put this in place today. We're set to close mid-February so they can stay on track with the project, complete it on time for opening day. Happy to answer any questions, but it really is exactly what we have in place right now. Just references the new debt.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kuzlinski?
And they're resubmitting to try to get a new grant from the state, right?
They are. They're submitting again. So, and the way we're structuring this is if they do get additional grant funds, they'll pay this down with those funds.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, Commissioner McGloin and I were up at the stadium yesterday, and things are progressing really, really well. So we're excited about the project. It's really going to enhance the overall experience at the stadium and keep us in line with all the regulations from Major League Baseball as well. So, we're excited about it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Resolution 25-0016.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a reimbursement agreement with PennDOT, and does hereby authorize the chair of the Board of Commissioners and the director of Roads and Bridges to approve the electronic reimbursement agreement and required exhibits for the G.C. Smith Street Bridge Replacement Project, Agreement Number R2404023. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the county engineer, Mr. Frank Zilla.
Morning. Thank you.
Morning, Frank.
So the Roads and Bridges Department is proposing to replace the G.C. Smith Street Bridge in Elmhurst. The existing bridge, right now, is an existing 76-foot steel plate garter bridge in poor condition, and it's at the end of its useful life. The proposed new bridge will be a new two-span concrete box beam bridge. So, everyone's aware, this is the only crossing over the Roaring Brook that allows access to the Elmhurst Township Building and the Sewer Authority. There's no other way in or out of G.C. Smith Street right now. Due to the lack of an alternate crossing, this has been on the county's priority list for quite a while now. The cost to date for all the preconstruction costs have been paid for through the county's $5 registration fee fund. That's been the funding source eligible for the project to date. Now, for the construction phase of the project, this project is also eligible to be paid for through a PennDOT reimbursement agreement. And that's the agenda item here today. So, at this time, PennDOT is asking the county to enter into a reimbursement agreement, as described in the submitted documents, where PennDOT would pay for the first $4 million of the construction costs. At this time, the construction costs are projected to be less than $4 million, though any future cost over ones might be subject to be paid for through the same $5 vehicle registration fee fund that the preconstruction costs were paid for. And in addition to that, as Mr. Jeffers mentioned, PennDOT is also asking that individuals be named to have signature authority in PennDOT's online ECMS system to approve project-specific exhibits as they come about during the life of construction. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Frank.
Thanks.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0017.
Entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the United States Marshal Service. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a three-year intergovernmental agreement with the United States Department of Justice, U.S. United States Marshals Service, for a new negotiated per diem rate of $119 for the Lackawanna County Prison to house federal detainees. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the warden of the county prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is an agreement with the U.S. Marshal Service that is intended to allow for an increase in the per diem rate charged by the Lackawanna County Prison for housing federal detainees at the county prison. We've negotiated an increase from $102 to $119 per day, and that would be effective 2/125, provided that you agree to enter into this agreement. With that said, I'm recommending that you vote in favor of the agreement.
And what was the additional revenue, again, Warden?
Well, right now, our current, today, the population of U.S. marshal detainees is 139 individuals. If you projected that out, that would be an increase of $862,000 for the year if we averaged. And we're low right now. We normally average over 150. Right now, we're at 139. So it's a substantial amount of money over the course of the year.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Warden Betty? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved.
Thanks, morning.
Thank you. Resolution 25-0018.
Entering into an engagement letter for the audit of the area agency on aging. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal and enter into an engagement letter with Murphy, Doherty, and Company for the audit of the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging for the years 2024, 2025, and 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of the AAA, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning, Commissioners. The agency is seeking approval to contract with Murphy, Doherty Company to provide auditing services for fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026. Annual audits of the Aging Office are a mandatory state requirement. The initial cost is $17,250 for year one, and increases $500 annually. So in the final year will be $18,250. Aging budget is 100% reimbursed through the Pennsylvania Department of Aging Black Grant, so this will cost the county no money.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0019.
Entering into an engagement letter for the Office of Drug and Alcohol Audit. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal and enter into an engagement letter with Barbetti McHale LLC for the audit of Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the years 2024, 2025, and 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is Acting Director of Health and Human Services and Drug and Alcohol Director, Ms. Barb Durkin.
Hi, Barb.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm looking for your support for the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs to enter into a contract with Barbetti and McHale for our audit services. The amount will not exceed anything more than $12,000. It's all reimbursed by the state. It won't cost the county any money. We've used Barbetti in the past. They've been very easy to work with, with my fiscal officer, so no issues there.
Any questions for Director Durkin? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0020.
This is approving a consulting services agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Second Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement with MacWright Consulting LLC of 1345 Fieldbrook Drive, York, Pennsylvania, six-month agreement to commence on January 22nd, 2025, at a cost of $10,000 per month. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our county solicitor, Mr. Don Fredrikson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This before us today is an extension of the consulting agreement with MacWright Consulting. As remember, we brought her on last year to help us right the ship with the Office of Youth and Family Services. It has resulted in the restoration of our license at this point. However, we believe it's still important to keep her on board for additional consulting, moving ahead, and totally, the office is running completely on par. It's a six-month extension. It'll run from January 22nd until July 31st of this year.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question.
Just really quick on the question. I think Bev has been great. I think, you know, the people that work with her on a daily basis and are in constant communication with her really have seen that. And obviously, over the past year, Don, we've seen what having somebody like her on board, what we're able to achieve when we really work together. So she's been fantastic, very experienced, very knowledgeable. So this is, it's a great thing to keep this going for a few more months or so, just to, you know, continue to get on the path that we're on and to stay on that.
I agree, Commissioner. I think she was integral in helping get us our license restored, absolutely, the full license.
Thank you. On the question, I agree. Ms. MacWright has done a really good job since we brought her on board to help us turn around the Office of Youth and Family Services, along with our Director of Human Services, Barb Durkin, and Carrie Browning, who is now the Director of OYFS. Ms. MacWright's experience and her relationships throughout state government have really been instrumental, as Mr. Fredrikson and Commissioner McGloin alluded to, in helping to get the license back. And, you know, one of the more amazing things, I think, is that today we are at around 70% staffed in the Office of Youth and Family Services. If you went back to last year, we were well below 50%, well below. So now we're at 70%, and now we're continuing to move forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0021.
Approving provider contract for the Office of Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities, and Early Intervention. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the provider contract between Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities, and Early Intervention Programs with Abound Health, P.A.L.L.C., for the fiscal year '24 through '25. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, our Behavioral Health Director, Ms. Mickey Drushel.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disability, and Early Intervention Program is requesting your support to modify a contract that we had with a provider named Care For People Plus, who is changing their name to Abound Health, LLC, to approve and sign this contract. It is for intellectual and developmental disability services to be provided to about 20 individuals and families. The three services that they're primarily offering are companion, in-home and community support and respite services, which really help an individual to be successful within the community. The total for this contract is approximately $78,000, which is well within our budget and should not have any financial, will not, and I shouldn't say should not, will not have any impact to the Lackawanna County budget overall.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0022.
Entering into an agreement with Hailstone Economic. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the independent contractor agreement with Hailstone Economic, LLC, 550 Clay Avenue, Scranton, on behalf of the Borough of Moscow and the Townships of Covington, Elmhurst, Jefferson, Madison, Roaring Brook, Spring Brook, and Thornhurst. Agreement is to commence immediately and expire June 30th, 2027, at a cost not to exceed $144,800. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the North Pocono Planning Committee, applied for and received funding for the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to develop a regional comprehensive plan and update the eight local zoning ordinances and zoning maps. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Economic Development Director, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. As was stated, this authorizes a contract between Lackawanna County and Hailstone Economic of Scranton, on behalf of eight North Pocono municipalities, to develop a regional comprehensive plan and update zoning ordinances. This is in conformity with the PA Municipalities Planning Code.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0025.
Entering into a grant agreement with ACE. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Agency for Community Empowerment of Northeastern Pennsylvania, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Suite 311, Scranton, for the administration of the Emergency Housing Repair Program, Heating Crisis Program, under the 2025 Lackawanna County Affordable Housing Act 137 program. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the utilization of the 2025 Lackawanna County Affordable Housing Act 137 program funds by ACE in the amount of $40,000. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Once again, here's Director Magnata.
And we just so happen to pick the coldest day of the year to have this on the agenda, so.
Yes, to talk about the importance. So this is a yearly agreement with ACE to provide emergency heating assistance to lower-income owner-occupied, single-family homeowners, most of whom often time can't afford these urgent repairs. This is no cost of the general fund. It comes out of Act 137, funding of $40,000. And just to give you an idea, last year in 2024, we were able to help 20 different people with different urgent heating needs.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
It's a wonderful, wonderful thing.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0025.
Entering into a grant agreement with Neighbor Works. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into and authorize a grant agreement between the Department of Economic Development of Lackawanna County and Neighbor Works, Northeastern Pennsylvania, 815 Smith Street, Scranton, a Pennsylvania nonprofit community development organization. Be it further resolved, the county intends to undertake and carry out the First-Time Home Buyers Program to assist median and low-income individuals and families in Lackawanna County in preserving and achieving home ownership by providing down payment subsidies and closing cost subsidies utilizing $129,375 in funds made available by the Lackawanna County Affordable Housing Act 137 program. Neighbor Works will undertake the administration of the First-Time Home Buyers Program. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnata.
This is another yearly partnership with Neighbor Works to provide first-time homebuyer assistance using the Act 137 funds. This helps moderate-income families with closing costs and down payment costs not to exceed $7,500. And to give you an example, this money usually runs out for Neighbor Works before they can meet all the needs, and this amount of money helps 15 individuals every year.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnata? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0026.
Ratifying Community Development Block Grant Program modifications and revisions. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify submissions of modifications and revisions to the Community Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. For Oliphant Borough, fiscal year 2021, the modifications allocate $86,725 for Jackson Street Sanitary and Stormwater Separation Project Phase 2, and deletes $86,725 from the Jackson Street Sanitary and Stormwater Separation Project Phase 1. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners, be it further resolved that the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179, has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnata.
Commissioners, this is a formality to ratify the submission of modifications and revisions for the CDBG program. This puts in place the Oliphant Borough Jackson Street Sanitary and Stormwater Separation Project Phase 2, and deletes the Jackson Street Sanitary and Stormwater Separation Phase 1. This is, again, as was stated, $86,725. The cost is completely through the CDBG program and not from the general fund.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0023.
Your appointments to the Lackawanna County Women's Commission. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby make the following appointments to the Lackawanna County Women's Commission's either three-year terms to commence immediately and expire on December 31st, 2027. Ms. Rita Cronin Holmes of Scranton, Christine Poches of Scranton, and Deborah Peterson, a South Abboton Township. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0024.
An appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board with a term to commence immediately on February 1st, 2025, and continue through January 31st, 2028. Mr. Michael McDermott is the manager and finance secretary of the IBW Local 81, sitting as the representative of labor. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0030.
This is an appointment to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority, Congressman Matthew Cartwright of Music, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2029. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question.
Yeah. Just on the question, I mean, to have somebody sit down and represent this authority that has spent 12 years in Congress, it's really a wonderful thing for all of Lackawanna County. And, you know, as I think we all know, while in Congress, Matt had gone to incredible efforts to help secure funding for the passenger rail service between Scranton and New York City. And that's something that, you know, he's fought to restore that service for years and years. And now for him to join our rail authority, and for us to be able to have the chance to work with him, and to have him be a part of the county, it just, I believe it strengthens our efforts tremendously with Amtrak passenger trains coming to Scranton.
Thank you. On the question, I'll echo what Commissioner McGloin said. Congressman Cartwright has worked tirelessly over the last 12 years as a congressman on this rail project, and he wants to continue to advocate for the project and make sure that we can get it across the finish line, which is extremely important for our region, our whole area. I also want to thank Dominic Keating, who Congressman Cartwright is replacing, who I know will remain involved in this project, and he has served very well over the last several years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0031.
An appointment to the County of Lackawanna Transit System Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the County of Lackawanna Transit System Authority, COLTS. Mr. Robert F. Durkin of Oliphant, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2029. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on January 22nd, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question.
Yeah, just really quick on the question again. And, you know, Bob Durkin, obviously being our president and CEO at the Chamber of Commerce here, in which Bob oversees the planning and finances, and really a number of other things at the Chamber, but there is so much that Bob can bring to the table with respect to integrating the services of COLTS, with helping to promote economic development and success throughout NEPA. So really, you know, I think this is a home run appointment for us. And even Bob's background alone, at one point in time, serving as the executive director of the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, he was the director of, at the time, the Lackawanna County Transportation System years and years ago. And you can even go back as far to, you know, what his formal education was, that was focused on public transportation. So, great relationship with the Chamber and Bob, obviously. So, you know, really excited about him joining this authority.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Echo the comments of Commissioner McGloin. Glad to have Mr. Durkin on board at COLTS, and his background, I think, is going to serve us well, as Commissioner McGloin said, a former director of the Lackawanna County Coordinated Transportation System. And I also want to thank Larry Nguyen, who is the current chairman of COLTS, who Mr. Durkin will be replacing for all of his years of dedication and service to COLTS. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodawann at Scranton. Commissioner McGloin, my belated condolences on the loss of Penn State to Notre Dame. It was such a close game. And don't let Commissioner go and give you any flack, because Notre Dame did not fare very well against Ohio State, so.
Joan, just as I'm getting over it, you have to bring it back up.
I know. I know.
We need one of the sheriffs to remove Joan from.
Yeah. Yeah, right. What is the status of the 2023 audit?
We're expecting to have it by a draft by the end of this month.
Okay, so possibly in February, a public meeting?
Yes. As soon as it's complete, we will have the public meeting with the auditor.
Okay. And how close are we to finishing? And how close are we to finishing the installation of the digital budget book?
Very close. Just finishing up a couple of things that should be within the next.
I think those two actions will serve the county very, very well.
Yes.
And I'm looking forward to that. And the only other thing I want to comment on is cold blue. I was at City Hall this week, and we were discussing cold, cold blue and what you do at seven or eight o'clock in the morning when the shelters normally send the people out, because this morning it was sub-zero. And I don't know whether there's such a thing as a county perspective on it, since there are homeless throughout the county, not just in the city of Scranton. But I don't know how anybody survived last night if they were outdoors. It was bitter. So hopefully, we'll never find someone frozen under a tree or under a bridge, and I do worry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Wallace, Scranton. Just congratulations to President Trump and Vice President Vance. Still proud to be an American and a veteran. Unfortunately, I could not attend the inauguration ahead scheduled for left-shoulder steroid I want to thank ECTV for their help in making my dinner a tremendous success, the best I ever had in 31 years. We had 75 Chinese journalists from all over the world attend the dinner. It's now a national, international, and local celebration, and it's from Scranton, Pennsylvania. I want to thank all the firefighters that responded to the devastation that we had in a fire-in troop that destroyed my companies and our facility. The thing there, I was a fallen firefighter in troop for 15 years. When the fire department was located on the boulevard, I ran the engine. So I've been around fires a long time in there. What happened? As the place burned, I have serious objections to the conduct of Dixon City Fire Chief, bringing in an excavator as the fire was almost out. I had an argument with him, told him I didn't want it there. He had me put with the police that if I opened my mouth anymore, he was in charge, I was getting arrested. Well, he continued to allow this excavator to destroy more of the property, destroyed all our files. Files that were in fireproof drawers were crushed, scattered all throughout the facility, where there wasn't even a fire. Went to the further end of the building and took burning material that his purpose was there to help extinguish hotspots, took it and dumped it on top of one of our heavy-duty wreckers that cannot be replaced and burned it up. This is what I put on with the incompetence of a fire chief who thought he was better and smarter than anybody else, and we'll take issue with him and everything else that happened there. But as to the firefighters, God bless them, they were great. They did one hell of a job, and I'm proud to say I was part of them at one point. We lost titles to over 200 vehicles out of the fireproof drawers and filing cabinets because this idiot crushed them. It made our recovery a hell of a lot more serious than it should have been or could have been. The problem I have with people, sometimes they have issues. And Mr. Gahan, one of the issues I have with you, your challenge on my charitable contributions. Well, while this fire was burning and continues what we went through, my trucks are still in North Carolina, Florida, Georgia, Tennessee, delivering to the people out there that were devastated by the hurricane, and now they're loading to go to California. I'd like you to tell me what you did for your charitable contributions on Christmas Day. How many people did you feed? How many people are you sending goods and trucks to take care of people, other than your self-serving attitude that you have against me? You want to sell my properties, you're with the Sax Claim Bureau, trying to make them go sell my properties. Well, let me tell you something. When Lackawanna County pays me the 18-plus million dollars where they screwed up and put a tax lien on me personally, and in three and a half years have never removed it, forced me into a bankruptcy that destroyed my other companies, and you sit there and smirk at what I've done for this community, match me someday. In addition, I've gone through a hell of a lot of issues with my left shoulder, when the sheriff here, under your orders, manhandled me toward the ligament of my shoulder. I've been to Florida for treatment, I've been to the VA for treatment, I'm scheduled for surgery, had to have shots the other day, and prevented me from attending the inauguration of my president. You will be held accountable this time. I'm not taking any more of your bullshit, any more of your insults.
There's no cursing at the podium.
No, you listen to me for a change. I'm the taxpayer in this county, not you, and I have a right to speak.
You don't have to yell.
You have turned around and discredited me every opportunity you have. Well, I now have 400 spruce streak, and the Biden signs are going the hell down, and I want you standing there when we cut them down.
Okay.
I'm not going to take your insults anymore or your abuse that I got here. I will see you in the courtroom, and you know what you could do with your red lights.
Good luck. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, other business? Commissioner Turmack?
Well, let me start by, I guess I'll quote Dean Martin, "Baby, it's cold outside." So it's been a brutal couple of days. Bob, I hope things work out with your devastation. It was tragic. You had a lot of hard work in there with your looking for missing veterans and people, MIA people, and all your files are gone, so there's some, there's some things that are, you can't replace, but I hope that all works out. We heard from Sarah today, we heard from Barb, Mickey, Kristin. I just want to thank.
Recovery, Mr. Turmack.
Excuse me.
I'm speaking to a commissioner.
Time is up.
No, your time is up. A commissioner has a right to ask a question.
You gotta follow the rules.
Get it through your damn head, you don't own anybody.
Sheriff, get him out of here, please.
You have another question, Mr. Commissioner?
Remove him from the meeting.
Bob.
You gotta sit down, you have to follow the rules.
I have a right to speak to the commissioner.
No, you don't. Your time is up.
So put your hands on me again. I'm going to leave. He's out of order.
Out of order, Mr. Bowles.
The commissioner has a right to ask me a question.
He wasn't asking you a question.
No, no. Do you have a question, Mr. Commissioner?
Mr. Bowles, but, excuse me. Sheriff, please remove him from the meeting. He's not going to interrupt these proceedings.
Bob, I'll talk to you after. Bob, I'll talk to you.
You demand respect. You gotta earn it for it, and you haven't done it yet.
Please remove him from the meeting.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I can't answer your question.
He didn't have a question for you. Okay, yeah. Go touch a blade of grass, please.
All right, let's, let's, let's not, let's not.
Yeah.
Roll fuel on this.
Please remove him from the meeting. Thank you.
I have no responsibility of you, you responsible.
Okay. Get a life. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Turmack? Go ahead.
Well, anyway, I will talk to Mr. Bowles after the meeting, but I just want to thank Sarah, Barb, Mickey, Kristin, for your efforts. I don't think they're all here, but Mick, I see Mickey. But your expert, your expertise that you put towards your departments and your dedication to your department, so I appreciate everything that you, that all of you do. You know, over the past week or so here, I've had the opportunity to, I was invited to the swearing-ins for our new Senator, our new Congressman, which to me was like almost a once-in-a-lifetime thing, so I was able to attend that. That was interesting, and I wish them the best. And then yesterday, I was able to witness the swearing-in of our State Treasurer, our State Auditor General, and our, and our new Attorney General. So again, we have some great people, and I wish them the best, and I hope we can, you know, keep moving Pennsylvania forward. It's only, can only help us here in Lackawanna County. And for this, for the government, or I mean, for the national side of the government, I hope with our new president, I hope we have some, some good things happening in the next